In recognition of this somber anniversary of the attack on the United States on September 11th, 2001, so if you would join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Is there anyone here for citizens' comments? I don't see anybody, so I will not read the guidelines for public comment or review the policy for public comments. So the next item on the agenda is the chair's update. So I just have a few things that I just wanted to let the committee know that in July, beginning of July, I attended MASC Summer Institute and they had a session on the role of the chair, which I found extremely helpful and useful, got a lot of good information. But the other thing that was helpful was that I was in a room with other school committee chairs from all over the state and got some good ideas and learned some things. And one of the things I learned, much to my surprise, is that there were people that are bossier than me. And so I might have upped my game a little bit, but subtly hopefully. But I'll speak to another thing that came up later on on the agenda. But I found it very worthwhile and was happy to see it so well attended. I think it was like July 12th or 13th. It was very good. A reminder about attendance. There are seven of us. Our quorum is, there should be eight, our quorum is five. So please be sure to let me know if you are not going to be able to make a meeting as soon as you know. And if looking ahead, you notice that you have a conflict on your calendar, let me know. Because if we don't have a quorum, we can't meet. And if we miss a meeting, given the heft of our planning calendar, it means we probably have to reschedule the meeting. So that's just a reminder on that. I wanted to make folks aware that on August 19th, the Department of Education released an updated superintendent's rubric. Those of you who have participated or just have an awareness of the rubrics for the evaluation of educators in the state of Massachusetts. There are rubrics for the superintendent, for educators, for administrators. There is a new one. The former one, and those of us who have completed the evaluation before, is very dense, if you will. Several of us expressed concern over some of the things that we were asked to evaluate that have no, we have no visibility to, like evaluation of administrators. That's not been our purview. So this is a new rubric. And what I would like to do is we don't have to adopt it. Brooke has indicated an interest in using it this year. I think it makes a lot of sense. I would like to send it out to folks to look at. I'll send both, so you can see the difference. And I know that Brooke is currently working with the Personnel Subcommittee on her goals. And so there's the superintendent's annual plan. But part of the evaluation process is the identification of indicators from the rubric to also be part of the evaluation. So I just wanted to share that and send that out to folks. Okay. And just a reminder, I may have said this, and it's probably in the school committee handbook, that many times we get correspondence as a whole committee. And when you see that, please trust that I will respond in some way, shape, or form. Sometimes the contents of that communication is not within our purview. And I let the correspondent know that. But if something in the correspondence concerns you, if you have questions, please get in touch with me and I will answer any questions that you have. And again, commenting on or responding to issues related to personnel and students is not within the purview of the school committee. Okay. So we have our student representative, Izzy. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
So glad to see you here.
Thank you.
And you have an update for us?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Let's hear it.
So this is our first full week of school, which we are halfway through. And everyone's kind of starting to get over that initial stress of doing it. Even the freshmen are finally like getting their schedules down and stuff. So for the sports, we've had an exciting start. Spirit Days are in full swing, so the hallways are always filled with girls with face paint and tutus and glitter and all that sort of stuff. Girls volleyball is undefeated, three and oh. And it's really been just a show every game. We keep almost giving our coach a heart attack. The golf team is currently four and oh. Girls soccer is one and one. And football has their first game this Saturday at noon at Turf at Neshoba. The music department is hoping to host their first, or not their first, their annual car wash this Saturday at nine o'clock in front of the high school. It's five dollars per car. There will also be baked goods and all the proceeds go towards the music department. The Center School welcomed 74 kindergarteners and another 24 new students, grades one through five. All students participated in their first all-school meeting on the first day of school. And last night, they welcomed the parents at back-to-school night. And in other news, Neshoba has a new ASL club that meets every week on Mondays and Wednesdays. And on Thursday is Neshoba's open house, where the parents get to walk their kids' schedules and meet all the teachers.
Izzy, what is ASL?
American Sign Language.
Oh, wow. And this is a new club?
Yeah. It's run by the choir director and a few of the students.
Excellent. Any questions for Izzy?
Well, you finished your report or did you have more?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you. And we appreciate the updates about other things going on at the other schools and look forward to your future reports. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Superintendent, oh, I'm sorry. Did you guys?
No, but I want to, because I'm not sure if she's going to leave right away. Before you walk out the door. So I just wanted to ask you, did anything special happen this summer to you?
Yeah. So I was part of the Spartans Drum and Buhle Corps. If you don't know what Drum and Buhle Corps is, it's basically, it's a giant marching band, all brass players and percussion. And we won the world championship.
Ooh.
Which was cool.
I'm not sure how to deal with courts. I'm actually going to report on it.
So this summer, Isabel Sonia of Lancaster, Neshoba Class of 2020, earned the title of world champion at the Drum Corps International DCI Open Class World Championship Finals in Marion, Indiana. As a member of the Spartans, a Nashua, New Hampshire-based drum and buhle corps, it performed throughout the country this summer and competed against almost 50 other student groups in pursuit of the title. In her first year with the corps, Ibi played baritone and was named Brass Rookie of the Year for the elite six-time world champions Spartans. Ibi also performs in Neshoba's concert band and pep band and sang the National Anthem at newer school events. And we have some flowers we'd like to give you to write.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And really, now you could go. Other superintendents' report before I go into a presentation up here. Staff recognition. Three Neshoba regional high school teachers were nominated for a 2019-20 Life Changer of the Year Award, sponsored by National Life Group. This award recognizes and rewards K-12 school employees who make a positive difference in the lives of students. The three Neshoba educators are Lauren Bullard, a life science teacher, Katie Jenkins, a social studies teacher, and Robert Griffith, a psychology teacher. Mrs. Bullard was recognized for her ability to foster community. Ms. Jenkins' classroom prowess was highlighted, as was Mr. Griffith's appreciation for his students. A total of 16 winners will be chosen across the country and cash prizes of $3,000 to $1,000 will be awarded. These cash prizes involve both personal awards and donations to schools. So we know that it's just nominations, but we're super proud of our teachers. So thank you. So I'm going to go into a bit of an overview of our first day back. This is much longer than I would normally do for superintendent's report, but I think in light of opening school and the number, sheer number of topics come up, I'm going to actually do a little bit of teeing up here. And I know that Rob is going to pick up some pieces after and probably Lisa as well. So can we put up my presentation here?
Do you have a video?
Yeah. Let's start with the video.
And we've all shared the communications so that we're all basically on the same page. The mosquitoes has been one that's been a little bit, kind of upping the ante a little bit because as we've been going on, for example, Stowe, I believe it was Stowe was just designated as high, at a high level, so that's concerning for us. We took a look at it though and said if we're doing something for one community, of course, we want to do it for all three because we believe in the equity of treating all of our communities equally. Rob will probably speak to this. We've done spraying along the tree lines in all of our, around all of our buildings. We've done the first pass of that probably about thirteen, fourteen days ago. And the next pass is ready to go. If it hasn't happened already, it will happen over the next several days. That is totally separate from the memo that I sent out yesterday, which came from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Services with the pest division of that. They're looking at doing aerial spraying and we got that, I want to say about three o'clock yesterday. And I think they were scheduled to spray at four thirty, I think is when the first spray was supposed to happen. And it was kind of, can you please let everybody know we're doing this? And it was like, oh my gosh. We've got like a very short period of time to be doing this. They, they were looking at spraying for obvious reasons, Stowe and Bolton. And so that would encompass our high school. And I got an email asking last night about what about the high school? The high school is considered in Bolton, so that area would have been inclusive. Lancaster is not right now on that list, and so I'm sure that that will be a topic that's going to be discussed tomorrow, according to their chairperson who I spoke with today. Other than that, we've asked that children, the smaller ones, we can't apply repellent. But if the parents think to maybe perhaps apply repellent before they send their children. Of course, the obvious that we all understand is that repellent isn't going to last into the afternoon. So we're aware of that. I don't have a quick answer on that, but I know that we can't physically administer that repellent. At that, now, the high school games, repellent is available for our high school students if they're doing football or whatever that they're doing out there. With that also came, in the last twenty-four hours, a whole reschedule for all of our athletic games. And so that is huge. That's an enormous undertaking. And that has a lot of implications that come with it. For example, when you compress and everybody's trying to play inside of a much shorter period of time, for example, there are only so many refs to go around. And so the refs are just backlogged right now, trying to get to as many games as they can. And we're trying to work this. So it is being a logistical nightmare for Tanya Rich as she's been working through this. We've been very cognizant to the timeframes that have listed, been listed, and I think that's on MAST DEP, right? And you'll see that the timeframes literally change every week because of course the sun goes down at different times, you know, daily right now. So we've been following the MAST DEP guidelines throughout all of this. I think the other thing we would mention is that we've encouraged parents when long sleeves make sense. We understand that you can't send your children to school in eighty-five degree weather with long sleeves. But if they're playing outside, long sleeves where possible, both arms and legs make sense. So I think we've done the best that we can do. I hope I'm not missing anything, Lisa and Rob. If I am, I'm sure that you'll bring it up after. But that gives you a general overview of where we're at with, with the mosquito issue that we're, we've been confronting this year. One of the questions that we asked the other day, of course amongst ourselves is, will be, will we be in the same position again next year? Because everything we do right now, of course, is case setting precedent moving forward. And then Rob had said something, said something, I think it's on the DESE, not the DESE, sorry, MAST EP website, that we're probably looking at this for the next two to three years, is what they're projecting. With the memo that I sent out, not yesterday, but the day before, actually yesterday's memo has some too. But the day, the memo before that had some, a couple of really good websites. If you haven't been onto those, I encourage our parents to go onto those websites and take a look at them. Stowe also has a very nice synoptic on its Board of Health website. So if you go into just the, the general town of Stowe, and then the Board of Health is over to the right, just kind of click on it, and it has a really nice synoptic of some things for parents to keep in mind. So I encourage that you go on there as well. So that's pretty much it to, for mosquitoes. The next item is, and again, remember, we're talking, this is all about safety, police access to cameras. Previously, the police have had access to their communities. So for example, Lancaster had ability to go into the Lancaster schools. Stowe, Stowe had the ability to go into Stowe schools and Bolton, of course, the high school and the Florence Sawyer campus. One of the things that the police came and asked us is, and, and I understand, and we've got, honestly, I say this without any bias, I believe the best police forces that we could ever want to deal with in these three communities. For example, they, they've got waivers. So for example, and this is not a good example to use, but if there was a bad guy, this is really simplistic language, a bad guy on the run from Lancaster, and he hit Bolton, the Bolton police don't have to overtake that anymore. The Lancaster police, they've got waivers in place so that all police can move in all the time with anything, which is exactly what we would want. So for example, I mean, previously, we've always, it's been kind of the underwritten rule that if anything happens at the high school, all three police forces would come in at the same time. What our police are saying to us, and, and I know that's just who they are, is they will all be there for all buildings, all the time, irregardless of their community that they belong to. So they're saying, you know, they want to be able to look it up on their phones right away. If something's going on in Stowe, they want to be able to see. And they, we've numbered all of the buildings. I'll talk about that in a minute too. So they can literally go in and see exactly where something's happening. So our, our technology unit has been working very closely with the dispatch officers. We have two dispatches, of course, one in Stowe and one that, the devils that oversees Lancaster and Bolton. So they've been working very closely this summer to make sure that they have the access that they need. So that's kind of in terms of strengthening kind of the non-facility. If we can move to the next slide.
Can I ask a?
Oh, certainly.
I just have a quick question. I know that you're not in charge of this, but did the aerial spraying actually happen yesterday?
Oh, you're right. We don't have anything to do with that. I, I wouldn't know.
It was delayed. From what I understand, because I went on the website, it's supposed to take place over the course of several days, three days or so. But I think yesterday it's got delayed, so it could be today, tomorrow.
I think it said that in the memo too, depending on the weather and the winds and such, so, yeah.
And they'll be giving you notice, maybe a little bit more notice, or?
No, I don't think so. If I was the vending woman, I'd say that was it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And it was classified as an emergency waiver. And, and I think it was emergency because if you take a look, you can see that it was very quickly pulled together, like there were some typos in there as such, that normally that, that's not the kind of thing that comes out of DEP or any of the state departments. And so I think, I think they decided that we need to do this, we need to do this now, and here it is, and schools, here it is. So that's how I took it. So I don't suspect or anticipate that we will be receiving anything more from them. I think that was it.
Evening only, evening application?
It is beginning around seven thirty, three, four thirty in the morning.
In the morning, yeah.
It's only.
We've also done some additional things too. I mean, we've made sure that we've pulled all of the extra toys, for example, that were outside, and, and we've done things like that, that, far too many details for around this table right now. But we've, we took extra measures as well. For strengthening for the facilities, that's a little bit different. We'll just go into the first bullet. Thank you. Lisa and Rob will talk to you shortly about the repeater additions. We are so excited to say that this is the direction that we're, we're moving in. Our chiefs have been asking for this for long before I came here. And Lisa will talk to you about a grant that they worked on together with our police departments. We received it, and now a repeater will be in every building. And they can give you more details when they come to talk about that. But I'm so proud of the work that our staff did with the police. And I'm proud to say that we are going to have these in all, in every one of our buildings from now on. So that's very exciting. Additional service and switches. This was part of a town, town votes that, that came forward this year on the town warrants in Stowe and Lancaster. We were in a good place with, already with Bolton, so Bolton didn't need to, to up theirs, but the others did. And so this will help to put us in a good position because Rob has shared with you before, but he will probably allude to it again tonight, the fact that we've got several years plan in place. And this was the first step. I think it's like a three-year plan. This was the first step that we needed before we could move into the second plan and the third plan, the third phase of it. And so we've had a discussion with the town administrators. Everybody knows where we're at with it, including, we've brought this up with our FINCOM, so we've had conversations with them prior to the town meetings. So I think everybody was in a good place for that. So that's done. And I believe all the services and switches are now in place within the district over the summer. The window film, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with that, with that. But I would tell you that that was one of the things you'll recall. Those of you who've been sitting on the school committee for a couple of years, you'll remember that a couple of years ago, we did a full comprehensive review, a safety review of every school and, and building in the district. And then we were able to take that, glean from that. And that's where the, as I was talking about earlier, the cameras and such, the switches and service, that was all part of that review. And so we sat down and took a look at it and prioritized it with their support, the, the help of the company who did it. One of the things that came forward was the, the notion of applying appropriate window film. It is not bulletproof, but it is shatterproof. Is that how we can determine it? And we have placed it on a number, a fair number of windows and doors across the district this summer. It, because it's not bullet, necessarily bulletproof, but the fact that what it does do is it slows the potential entry. And so that kind of helps our responders. And again, Rob will speak to that too, tonight. We did add a couple of additional cameras where we felt we absolutely needed to. And those are now installed as well. Rob may mention that too. And the window and door numbering, you can't, well, I guess you can't imagine how big a project that was in a school district our size, to have every single window and door numbered inside and out. And so there is absolute logic to it. It was very thoughtful in how it was done. And again, with our police safety partners. So basically, if we, we know that something is happening in room, I don't know, thirteen A, everybody knows, again, the police can go on, see exactly where it is, and know exactly where to go. So we feel very comfortable. That was, that was a huge project that really took us almost a year to complete. So thrilled with that. Water update. So there was a story, if you saw it in the Boston Globe, and I'm going to allude to that here shortly. And I know that our own local papers are doing a story on it as well. But let me just give a couple of salient points, and then Rob will speak on it again when he comes to talk. So we, we moved forward, I'm going to say, Rob, again, you can correct me, probably around May or so. We voluntarily majin, we voluntarily tested for PFOS. And there's a lot, if you're doing any homework or research in this area, there's a lot of things that fall under that. I think there's like two, over two thousand elements that fall into it. Our company is Whitewater, who's a vendor that we work with, that we're on contract with. They, they test for five of the key, the key ones, and the MAST DEP, I believe, tests for six. So our numbers are a little bit different between the Whitewater numbers and MAST DEP, but we expected that. We all expected that that would happen. So again, I know that we had a parent call and ask us about it, and we just looked at each other and said, it wasn't really because a parent called, it's just, it makes sense for us to be proactive. Because I said, if one parent is calling, that means other parents are thinking about it. We should be thinking about it. Why don't we be proactive with this? And then at least we have a gauge and we know exactly what's going on. Primarily in Bolton and Stowe because they're, they're well water. Lancaster's in a different position because you're, you're on town water. And that really falls to the purview of, of your town administration, your DPW. But I'll touch basis with that a little bit further in a minute. So we went after Bolton and Stowe first because they're all well water, and that's where we were, where we were looking. This is long before MAST EP ever came into our world because they weren't even on our radar at that point in time. So we tested that Bolton came back with, I think, zero detects, right? Absolutely zero. So we weren't worried about that. And by the way, Lancaster, I believe you get some of your water from Bolton area. So we felt that you probably were kind of safe. But with that, we have still asked for a voluntary water test anyway. Your town knows that we're doing that. So we knew that, we knew that Bolton was okay. We thought probably Lancaster was okay. We weren't as sure about Stowe. So Stowe's water came back and whatever the parts are, I think the acceptable right now is, I want to say seventy parts per trillion. They came back around that twenty to thirty parts. So we knew that we were well under and fully in compliance with the, that particular number. With that, though, came, you know, we'll keep our eye on this and see if, we didn't expect it to necessarily change a whole lot, but we'll keep our eye on it. Then we got a phone call from MAST DEP that said, hey, we're voluntarily, voluntarily asking, does anybody want to have their water tested? And we said, well, we actually have had our water tested, so I think we're in a good place. They said, well, why don't we test it too? So we looked at each other and said, sure. We already knew what the number was coming from Whitewater. They said, well, our number will probably be a little bit different because we test for, I believe, one more. And we said, well, that's fine. But yeah, sure, let's go ahead and do this. So then they did, they did it. They got their results back, and we took a look, and it was, again, very, very close. I think theirs was just a little bit higher than ours was, but not like ten or twenty. It wasn't anything like that. It was just a little bit more. So we knew that MAST EP was looking at potentially changing that seventy parts per trillion to a different number. So we have no idea, sitting here tonight, what that number will, will be. We suspect because there's grapevine scoop out there, not that anybody has told us this specifically. We are guessing though it's probably going to be around that eighteen to twenty-five parts mark. If that's the case, then Stowe will then be out of compliance. We looked at it and said, it makes sense for us to do something right now. Why, why wait until somebody comes along with a new number? We have no idea, by the way, when that will happen. But why wait? We might as well say, okay, we've got a PFOS issue here right now. Let's be proactive with it. And as Tom Hul says, we're always proactive anyway. This should be just one more thing that we're being proactive in. So that's what we did. So we brought water in, and I, I said at the time, because it was so close to the opening of school, I didn't know if we could get everything in place. But I said, like, let's not race through this. We do everything else thoughtfully. Let's be thoughtful with it. The water hasn't changed from like last week to this week. It's not going to change anymore. Let's just be thoughtful with this and get, get water in, however, whatever that looks like. But I think we managed to get all the water in place in the Stowe schools for the first, for the first day of school. We sent a memo out to staff, and we sent a memo out to our students, and we encouraged our students to bring their own bottles of water from home. And I know when Ross, while Karen did their first day back at Center School and asked, how many of you brought water? I think it was ninety-nine point five percent of the students had brought water in from home. Rob is continuing to look at this. We also, we met several times with the town administrator. As I said, we met, we met with the, your Stowe members, representatives from the Board of Health, and Nishoba representative. And we had our whole team there that has anything to do with this. So Rob was there, Lisa, our principals, Tom Hul was there, Pat was there, Todd was there. We were all there in case they had any questions that I couldn't answer that you might have had a piece of, or somebody else might have had a piece of. That was a very good meeting, very respectful of the approach that the, the Stowe Board of Health took with us. Very appreciative of working in partnership with them. We also did, took one step further, and we asked for a meeting with Kate Hogan. And that's because she, she's avidly and actively involved and interested in this particular issue. So it made sense for us to sit down with her as, again, as a small group of people, of leadership members. We did that and had a very good meeting with her. So I felt that we were in a good position to move forward. I think that our parents have been fabulous. We did have the Boston Globe come to do a story. I think that he maybe was looking for a different story than was present. I am so appreciative and respectful of our Stowe parents and how they dealt with that, that particular reporter. I, I don't think that they could have done one thing better. And when the article came out, it was pretty factual, and there wasn't a lot of, a lot of spin or story that really wasn't there. One of the things that Kate Hogan mentioned to us, and when we've talked with others, is for people to realize that this is something that's happening in real time. We don't have a lot of answers right now, and I think that that's one of the things I respected about the Stowe parents who corresponded with us. They realized that this is something that's happening in real time. And even the fix, to fix this, is happening in real time. Like, we're working right now with MAST EP to find the best fix we can find for those two schools. They will be marginally different, but I think in the last week, what we've realized is probably more similar than we had anticipated. At first, we thought it was going to be starkly different. It's not looking that way now as we move closer to whatever that fix looks like. So that's kind of where we're at with that. So that's a lot of safety things, so.
Regarding the water in Stowe, the students have been asked to bring in water. And we, you had mentioned to me at one point about water used in the kitchens.
Yeah.
Has, and, and what the workaround for that was going to be. So if you could talk about that and then what the potential budget impact would be?
Well, the potential budget impact is easy because the answer is we don't know.
Okay.
So we honestly don't know right now, and we can't even guess. We know that the engineering right now is going to be about forty-five hundred dollars for the two schools. But we don't know what thereafter, because it depends on whatever the fix is going to be for this. Rob's also been communicating with Hudson, because they have just, I, I met with their superintendent yesterday morning. And they, right now, just got back a no detect in their water finally, which is great. That's where we would like to be. I don't know if we can get there, but that's only, you're always aiming for excellence.
So are you bringing water in for the day-to-day operation of the kitchens?
Absolutely. So thank you for bringing that up too. I appreciate that. So if you were to take a look in our kitchens right now, they have huge, I don't know, is it five gallon? Five gallon bottles that sit in the sink with pumps on them. Anything that's being, I mean, we've taken a number of different, different activities with regards to this. For example, if we're having pasta or rice or anything that would absorb PFOS, that is being cooked off-site and being trucked down one seventeen to the, the Stowe schools. So if, if it absorbs it. Vegetables don't, so it's okay to, you know, with MAST DEP guidelines, it's okay to use it for vegetables and such. But right now, quite frankly, we're not using it for our vegetables either. We're using the bottled water for that kind of thing too. One of the other things that I hadn't even thought of, and this is why we've got such a great team to work with, is one of the ways of keeping our food warm is through steam. And we've shut that down. So there's no steam running in our evens anymore. So. And all, all of our water fountains have all been either clipped off, like they've got a little thing in. Rob can speak to that certainly, but I'm sharing so much, but probably Rob won't have anything to say when he does.
I know, good.
We've got clips on them. They've had some really neat little things there that just shut them down. Those that we couldn't shut down have been turned off. And if we couldn't do that, they've been wrapped in plastic. And there are water tables set up throughout the schools with cups and the water bottles, so, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anything else on safety right now?
Will we hear later from?
Rob?
Yeah, the report on kind of the projections on timelines and things of that sort. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. I'm, I'm sorry, I may, I may have missed this when you were going through the, the safety informational items. It says, police access to cameras. What, what is that?
So it, basically, like our camera systems in our buildings have previously, like last year, for example, Lancaster police could only see Lancaster schools. They couldn't see anybody else's school. And what they, the police chiefs collectively came and said, listen, if something happens at any Nishoba school, we will all be there. It won't just be Stowe, in Stowe. Like Lancaster police will be in Stowe as well. And so they wanted to be able to access and see where the issues were, so they all knew where they were going.
I had a quick, okay, so I'm a little bit confused by that. So I, I was not aware of what you just said. So the Lancaster police have video feeds to the police station for what's going on inside the school?
If there's an emergency, it's not a, it's not a full streaming.
Okay, that's what it's not, yeah.
We couldn't afford that. Well, even if they wanted it, we couldn't, we can't afford it. It's far too expensive. No, it's set up so that if there's a crisis, they go in. But for example, I think, I think the passwords for all three communities ran out, and they had to re-up because nobody had gone in. So it's only if there's a crisis situation that they would be going in there. Otherwise, no, they don't as well.
And then questions?
Great question.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Lina. Sorry, I gotta try. There's just a lot, so I'm going to try to get through it as quickly as I can. Leachfield, Rob's going to talk about that as well and give you a little bit more detail. But that was a great summer project. I think we're ninety-nine point nine percent complete right now. Pretty close to that. He'll talk to you about the oil tank that's on order and some timelines on that. The MSBA application, we're waiting word on that. We haven't heard anything, so knock wood. We're waiting for December to come quickly. One of the things that we're asking of the high school staff is that they spend some time this year looking at reflections on a new building or a dramatically changed building. I, I won't go into any detail on that right now, but you will hear more about that as we go through the school year. From there, I moved in on the first day into where we're, we're heading as a district with the, the district improvement plan, what that looks like. We had district improvement plans available the very first day for them. And then if they didn't pick one up there on site, we delivered them so that everybody had access to the district improvement plan. Last year, we had really focused on innovation, and we, we looked at George Karros's work, the innovator's mindset. And as I had said to our staff, you know, the first two years, we really worked at stabilizing the district, making sure whether it was fiscal, whether it was HR, whether it was spend, we really looked at stabilizing the district for the first two years. The third year is when we said, okay, we can start to stretch our thinking a little bit. What's that going to look like? And George Karros, I mean, tied in beautifully with the technology component that we were really focusing on, and then just the out-of-box thinking and, and how we could positively look at things through a very different lens. And he was fabulous. As we looked this year, we were really looking to tie in George Karros's work, and so continue that innovation, but tying in with SEL, with the social emotional learning, and what did that come together and look like? And so Tony Wagner, we thought was, would be, be a perfect tie-in as we move next year into more of a full SEL. So that's why the district improvement plan, of course, is a two-year plan because we see this is kind of that springboard year to get us to the, to year number two. So one of the things that Tony Wagner really stresses, and I also stressed that day, is the notion of going play, passion, and purpose. And I know, Ellen, you brought that up the other day with me when we were talking. He talks, Tony Wagner talks about play being the childhood piece, passion coming at the adolescence, and the purpose coming at the adult. But I challenge our staff to think, and maybe it's just because I often think of this, is play, passion, and purpose as adults. You know, in, in terms of, it's okay for us to take something that we love to do, in my case, it's education, and have that play piece. But then, as an adult, I, I move back and forth, I vacillate back between the play, the passion I feel for the work that I do, and the fact that there has to be purpose. And that purpose is always for me, always been, even as a teacher, doing the very best for the children that I serve. Whether it was in a classroom, as a teacher, a building as a principal, or a district as a school leader. So I want to make sure that we keep that notion of play, passion, and purpose at the forefront of our efforts and all the work that we do within the district, not just as leaders, but as teachers and leaders. So that was kind of the, the thrust of that. And I think, is that it? That's it for slides, right? So that gives us a broad overview of the day. I know Kathy, you were there because you were there to give some, some good, wonderful welcoming words to us, and I know Todd, you were there. So as leaders, you may want to kind of chime in and offer a thought or two on the first day. If I've missed anything, certainly.
I just wanted to talk about the vibe of the room. It was always, took me back to first day of, of school as a, as a teacher and as an administrator, and the sense that, that, you know, people are a little nervous no matter how long you've been working. It's also exciting to see everybody, everybody looks about ten years younger and, you know, have recharged their batteries. But also, I thought the opening presentation was very well done. Certainly the stuff that you presented, the video, and then Todd and Teaching and Learning speaking too, the different initiatives this year. And I think it, it moved, it didn't get stalled anywhere because teachers, secretaries, everybody just want to get back into their buildings and get started. And, and so I thought it was a good introduction to the school year. And thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Todd, for the work you guys did.
Thanks.
And thank you, Alita, because it wouldn't have happened without you being sure it was working.
Thanks.
Todd, any thoughts from you?
Yeah, no, I mean, it was a great opening day. The vibe was, was wonderful. I think teachers were really excited. There was a lot of positive energy in the room, and I think we set up our building leaders and our principals at our administrative retreat with a lot of resources and tools to really focus on that social emotional element. Part of the reason why we're bringing Tony in is because it really is a nice dovetail from George Karros's work, really around innovation. But, you know, Tony talks about the new skills that have really become more valuable and most valuable are those social emotional skills, such as cooperation and collaboration and motivation. And we really want to focus on, and giving our students those kinds of skills so that they can be really successful moving out of the, out of academia. so that they can be really successful moving out of academia. So we're really excited about what the year's gonna bring for us and really excited about Tony coming too. And I've talked with him several times, so.
We're excited about it, yeah. It was, I think it was a great start to the school year, so.
The feedback was wonderful.
Yeah, feedback was excellent.
The date for Tony Wagner is?
March tenth.
March tenth, sorry. Last year, Elaine and a few other folks from the school committee were there at the George Karros presentation. It was, I thought it was outstanding.
I cried.
Yeah. And I think we all cried after the bourbon commercial, which was like a rope-a-dope. There's this very emotional thing and a guy learning English so he can read the book his son wrote. And there's not a dry eye in the place. And then at the end, they clip their glasses. And it's a bourbon commercial, but the tee-up was great. So, March tenth.
March sixth, I'm sorry.
I thought it was March sixth.
Thanks, because I was just gonna ask everybody to pencil us in.
March sixth, Friday, March sixth.
And it's always the first thing. That would be awesome. So just keep it in mind.
It's a great day.
Any other questions or comments for Brooke or Todd? Okay, can we move on to the business office update? And here comes Kat and Ronee. How are ya?
Good, how are you?
Good to see ya. Great.
Hello, everyone. So I think I'm gonna do the request from the athletic director first.
Somebody has it.
I have it.
Yeah, I mean, they have the option. Somebody does.
Oh, okay.
Or Kathy does it later.
So our athletic director, Tommy Rich, has requested that we donate a large lot of old football jerseys and helmets to the Neshova Athletics Booster Club. Normally, what we do with surplus equipment is we put it up on a site called Munis a Bid and people are given the opportunity to bid on this. But within our community, we thought that this might be a better idea for us.
Kat, can you explain what the Booster Club does with the?
The Booster Club raises money for our athletics.
So they will sell these?
These, they, yeah, I'm getting, I'm going on. The Booster Club's intention is to sell the jerseys to players, fans, as a Booster Club event at games. So that's why it's important that I bring this to you right now, so that we can put them for sale at the football game. The funds raised will then be used to support our athletes, as the Neshova Athletics Booster Club has done so many years. The school committee policy states that we can donate surplus items to a 501(c) organization with a two-thirds school committee approval. And the Neshova Booster Club is a 501(c)(3) organization. So I'm requesting a motion tonight.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? Steve?
I move that we authorize the donation of excess and old equipment to the Neshova High School Booster Club for their purposes to support the athletes.
Thank you. A second, please?
One second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lea. Any questions or further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, I have some slides. So what I have in front of you is just a couple of slides in regards to our Chapter Seventy-Eight for Fiscal Year Twenty. So for Neshova, our fiscal year, Chapter Seventy-A, our fiscal year twenty, Chapter Seventy-A, budgeted amount is seven million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Right now, the state is projected to fund seven million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, which is an increase of about fifty-four nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. So anyway, this is, this is good news. This is a little bit more than we usually get as an increase. You know, usually it's about twenty thousand dollars and that's about it, but we've got a little bit more this year. So I just want to also say that this is projected. This could change because we know that the way, you know, the way that our legislature works, they change things around all the time and move money around. And so right now, we're hoping that this will hold true, you know, and that they will honor their commitment to the schools and giving us this number. They hope fast with that. I've also provided you with a slide. It's from the Department of Education and it will give you kind of a comparison of fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty and the changes. I mean, you can access more detail on this information on the DESI website. So, does anybody have any questions about anything here?
I think, I think we just wanna be cautious here. I know that right now, it looks like we've got fifty thousand more. But Pat and I were saying, we've both experienced years where that hasn't come through. And so we just, we're letting you know, just as a point of information, that's all this is. It's not that you plan for another teacher, wouldn't be for another teacher, or another, whatever, because you just can't count on that. Mike?
Assuming that money does come through, I absolutely understand where you're coming from and I wanna jump to your conclusions. Where would that money live before and maybe used for what purposes would it wait?
Ultimately, it ends up in E and D.
If it was left over, you know, like Pat will be bringing recommendations next meeting for funds to go into E and D. That's where that would ultimately land if it wasn't used. But it's way too early in the year to even think about this because we really don't even, like, and we might have one payroll under our belt right now. Do you know what I mean? Like, we, now is not really a good time yet for us to even think about potentially. But to your point, Mike, if it's left over, then Pat would bring recommendations to the school committee, like she will next meeting.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm going to bring everything for fiscal year nineteen that I have at this point. It's not audited, but it's pretty much where we stand at the end of fiscal year nineteen, so.
And when will the Chapter Seventy funds?
Come into the district? They come in monthly.
Okay.
They break it up. And if they, if there was an adjustment, they would adjust it, you know, about mid-year. You know, if they.
Mid-academic year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, around January or so, end of January, so.
Ellen, did you have a question?
Yes, and you may feel more comfortable speaking about this in the next meeting after what you just said. But in a similar process question, I know that there's gonna be an FY nineteen supplemental budget. It's not completed. The governor announced his version. Still has to go through the legislature. But like in previous years, when there's a supplemental budget that comes out, is that money ever planned to be used for something or does it go straight into E and D? Is it similar to this where it's sort of a bonus or?
Typically, like, if it was to be part of fiscal year nineteen, I think that the Department of Revenue has said that they were going to allow us to almost like incorporate into the previous fiscal year. But I'm not even sure whether or not that's going to happen. So I don't even want, I don't even wanna go down that road at this point. It's very confusing. It's part of, it's part of the E and D certification and whether or not they let us include it in our E and D for fiscal year nineteen.
I think there's a lot, I think there are a lot of questions that would be asked. So we've not been in that position yet, so we'll see.
But ultimately, we think of things like it as E and D funds and not as, well, we're hoping something comes through and this is where we replace it. Like, you don't even have those discussions, right?
Oh, no, that kind of discussion we have all the time.
Okay.
I mean, for example, you look forward, and I mentioned this before too, and I mean, free, full, decay is on our mind all the time, you know, because I think once you move beyond the philosophical, is this something to do or not, then that money piece comes in behind it, right? And you have to say, okay, so how are we gonna pay for that gap here? Well, right now, we know that we've basically got probably about half of what we need set aside for that. Well, we still have a little bit here that we need to go. We know that every year that we don't do this, we're losing out on state funding. So for us, it makes sense that you say, okay, at some point in time, we probably should talk about this sooner than later, right? So we have those kinds of, I mean, that's an example of a discussion that's happening all the time in our offices. We're watching. That's not the only discussion, but that's, I think, is that what you're asking? Is it like those types of discussions?
Yeah, you're at that level, okay.
We're always talking about that.
So that's about it. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Steve? It's not a question, but I think we have to realize, because there's always a lot of publicity about them redoing the foundation algorithm. And if they redo the foundation algorithm, the odds are we're gonna lose money rather than gain money because they're gonna cycle that money to poorer school districts and we would not. So looking ahead and trying to figure out, oh, how much money we're gonna get is not a good idea.
I think we have to live in the moment.
Yeah.
The fiscal moment, yeah, but you're right, we don't know. There's too much we don't know right now.
As soft of an impact as possible. And that's what we're planning for.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Pat, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And now we're going to hear from Lisa. Go picky.
Thank you for having me.
And welcome to the members. I see your faces around. I wasn't here for the first meeting yet, but thank you for having me.
I'm talking about a few grants that we received this year. First one is comprehensive school health service grant that we applied for. The goal is to implement a comprehensive interdisciplinary approach to student health in order to address school-based health prevention and promotion programs like substance abuse, reproductive health, oral health. Those are just some suggestions. Also support for students with chronic health conditions, diabetes, and a big focus on the shift of mental health, as well as to address health disparities and racial inequalities, homelessness, poverty, and access to care in order to improve student attendance and academic achievement. More importantly, the grant is also used to implement a reentry program or a BRIDGE program, which they call, a specific one called BRIDGE, for students returning to academics after an extended absence for reasons such as post-hospitalization, rehabilitation, or recovery from concussion in order to successfully return to learning. We started that process even prior to the grant being received last year and had a subcommittee that got together and looked at what our reentry looks like. And we're trialing that paperwork now and protocol to see if that fits into what our goals were. The program will work to establish targeted integrated supports for students whose learning has been significantly impeded by serious mental health and/or other medical challenges. We were awarded for the first four years of seventy-five thousand dollars a year with that money. We were able to hire somebody for a .6 position and also have funds to be utilized in order to support the program throughout the year. At the end of that four years, they will look at if we're meeting the goals and guidelines. Very comprehensive of what they want the goals to be and if we have this potential to continue for another four years after.
And this also ties back in with the SEL and our focus on this. But I'm thrilled. That's a lot of money to get. I know that it's targeted money, that it has to be spent on very specifics, but very specific to what we needed. So it was just, it was just a hand-in-glove moment, you know. So I'm thrilled and we've hired someone and she's started already.
As of day six, we had a pretty extensive caseload already. So we're in the infancy stages of how this is going to look over time. And I just, you know, asked, we're studying mostly at the high school, but we have cases in other schools as well to start off with. But we wanna be thoughtful of the process and not just jump in and not have a plan of what it looks like. Since it's a four-year plan, we really wanna make sure how we can support students currently right now. And we're off and running. So it's, we've actually, some of the funds as well, is a professional development day. We're gonna have all social workers, guidance counselors, nurses, and adjustment counselors attend a two-day training. It's called Prepare Training. And that'll start on our first two professional development days. We have over forty of us that will be there. And that looks at the trauma-informed brain, what it looks like, how we prepare for crises, and how to de-escalate.
The only other add-on I'd say too is certainly, and every year, I'm sure Lisa, you can probably speak to the same thing and/or other educators around the table. I remember way back when, when we really didn't have students out for hospitalization like we do now. And every year, that number grows more and more significantly. And, you know, when you say we were off and running, I know that you were because we had, we had students hospitalized in the summer that we're dealing with. So it happens. I think that people don't realize just how much it happens, but it does happen quite a bit.
It allows us to do a lot of home visits as well. We've already done quite a few, it's only how many days in school that we've done home visits and we have plenty of this scheduled as well to help support families. Any questions on that grant?
You were saying? Excuse me? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said that the BRIDGE, are you calling it the BRIDGE program?
There is, that's one program that they want us to look at. It's a BRIDGE program. It's what that looks like in some high schools that have implemented already. It's almost like that in-between. So when they're coming back from a post-hospitalization, they go to a safe room. We have something very similar already, so we're already ahead of the game with our academic learning center. It kind of mimics that same thing, that they have an area, a safe place before they can streamline back into the classroom. So we were already there. It's a matter of supporting that and giving it more support that may be needed.
And so the .6 position you were talking about is being added to what is already there?
No, not to that program. The .6 position is, it's a nurse that will do home visits and look at reentry, connecting outside communities with us now. What currently happens, if somebody's been hospitalized, a lot of times we don't receive information until right before they're coming back to school. And this is gonna start that process earlier to be able to go to these facilities and actually be part of the discharge plan and come back in. And then also work on programs for social-emotional learning, anxiety, things to get kids to come to school that are having difficulty getting through the front doors because of their mental health.
Other questions?
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks. So another grant, as we continue with the work that Brooke mentioned earlier with safety, 2019, 2020. Rob and I, help me if I miss anything, spent a lot of time, along with Pam Sebels, that she was really instrumental in helping with resources. She reached out to law enforcement, Everett down in Lancaster, and others. Peter from Belltronics helped us write this grant in order to receive it. The application was submitted and we awarded sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. For, we were in connection with all three police and fire chiefs that really wanted this. And it's for the repeaters and communication linking systems for all three schools, three towns, for the districts. It's a public safety linking community, inclusive of repeaters, linking system, radios, and licensing. And what that means is that we, they would be able to communicate, our principals or administrators in the building at the time would be able to communicate via radio to any Lancaster store or building, depending on what the situation or emergency that's happening. Something that, as Brooke had mentioned, the police and fire were looking for for quite a few years. And it was Chief Nelson that brought it to me one day and said, you wanna meet on Monday morning and discuss this grant? And he handed it to me and I said, I think it's great. He says, okay, let me know how it goes. Thank you, Chief Nelson, that he's the one that brought it to us. And we had a week and a half to write it and I'm very proud of the team that worked on it.
You too.
I couldn't have done it without Rob and Pam. It was really a collective team. And Peter from Belltronics, because I, for the longest time, I said, I don't even know what a repeater is, but we'll keep writing it. But it worked out well. I think one of the concerns the police had was particularly the high school. And that, just the way the high school is built and this will, that will take all of that away now. There won't be any more concerns with the high school on communication.
Really exciting.
And this has been an issue of longstanding. I remember back in 2016 that it was an issue because of the poor cellphone service, but the cost was prohibitive. So congratulations on getting the grant. And this is just another added layer of safety and security for the staff and students. Thank you.
Yeah. Just two more quick things. This, Rob and I will be working on another grant coming up that will be for next year. And we're gonna bring the objectives or goals of that grant or the stipulations of it to the Emergency Response Task Force. We do have law enforcement and safety committee members from each school that attend that meeting and really look at from each building and what would be the next priority for us as a school district. And obviously, we'll bring that to Brooke and talk before we move forward to make sure that that's where we want to be, as well as fire and police. We always partner with them when we're looking at what we're going to do district-wide as far as safety initiatives. But we'll, we'll be bringing that to the first meeting in October to see what, what our next move would be for that. We have some ideas. We also have a, coming down the line, I've been, I have a meeting on October ninth with the Board of Trustees from the Alice Eaton Trust Fund, that is for Stowe. They've reached out to me, it's been since January, we've been working back for months now on certain things that we could use funds for. Some of them are a library resource geared toward social-emotional for students and parents, a library, classroom audio technology, new hearing and vision equipment, since they were last purchased in 2000. Other health service equipments, diabetes camps, and family education support. We're looking at doing some after-school succession classes for parents and other family and caregivers of children and adolescents who have either been diagnosed with a mental health condition or experiencing symptoms but that have, may not have been diagnosed yet. So we're looking right around, around fifty thousand for that. And we'll be meeting October to find out if we qualify. We've been going back and forth and they're really interested in this as the next move as fast as we can with the trustees.
That's great.
Thank you. And then I think the thing we have left is physician contracts.
Okay, so do you have any, do you kind of speak to it or?
Yeah, because I'm sure that we, because we've got new members, they wouldn't even know about this.
Oh, physician contract, oh, hey, I'm sorry. So every year we sign a contract with their, we have a physician consult, Dr. Coleman out of Pediatric West. He consults as often as I want, it's, it's a contract for the year. He signs all of our standing orders, he signs our orders for EpiPen so we can obtain those for NOKI in our schools. And we consult with him anytime an administrator, even Brooke herself says, you know, can you pass this past the physician? We can ask questions and he consults with us to make sure that we're doing best practices and we're responding to parents and students in an appropriate manner. Also, standing orders, consults, and I think that's, that's basically, yeah, it's a majority of what we do.
It's a very valuable piece of the work that we do.
He prints all the athletic, at the beginning of the year, has to sign all the wrestling forms for Tanya, so I bring that to him. So he does a lot for us throughout the year and no matter what I ask him for, he's more than willing. And he gets back to us in a very timely fashion, very timely.
Very responsive.
He looks over protocols as well, so protocols, we did three new ones last year, asthma, diabetes, and medication administration. We have him review them, he makes suggestions on them, and then we edit it based on, he's the last one, we have everybody else look at it, and then he's the last set of eyes for our.
And how long has Dr. Coleman been our district's physician?
I don't.
I don't, before, before Brooke and I, so.
Okay, so he's one of longstanding?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Lisa about the physician's contract?
Do you have the original?
It's my thing, the original.
You have it? Oh, okay, sorry.
It was, it was in the material.
Yeah, it was in the material. Oh, they all have it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, they've all heard it.
So I need a motion to authorize, to authorize the superintendent.
Lena just gave it all to me.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I move to authorize the superintendent to sign the 2019, 2020 physicians' contract between the district and Dr. Russell Coleman. Dr. Coleman will receive a two thousand dollar stipend under the terms of the contract. I think we're getting him for a bargain-based underwriting.
Thank you, but don't put that into the. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any more questions or discussion, comments?
Lisa, I want to thank you so much. The, the work that you have done has just been amazing the last couple of years and these grants, these are not small grants, these are enormous grants. And just so appreciative of all you do for our district, thank you.
Thank you. Allie, thank you. opposed? Okay, I would echo the superintendent's words and I hope that, you know, these are the types of things that we'd like to showcase for the communities, that there are substantial grants that we get and these are all wonderful things on behalf of the students, so thank you and Rob for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Rob, this should be quick.
It should be. Thank you, Brooke.
Rob, take all the time, no rush.
It's good to see everybody, hope everybody had a good summer. It was a busy summer for us in the facilities department. I'll start off with the leach field, the project started on July first. Everything started off pretty smoothly until they got to started subsurface digging in one of the corners of the actual leach field itself, they found a large debris field. I think when they possibly were clearing some soccer fields or some land, they dumped all the stumps and everything in that area. So, working with DEP onsite engineering and construction dynamics, we were able to adjust the orientation of the leach field in a very short period of time. So there was really no disruption as far as the timeline of the construction went. As of right now, we're about ninety-five percent complete. All the disturbed areas have been hydroceded. The new pump and control panel will be installed next Wednesday, September eighteenth. DEP will give us final approval and bring the system online hopefully later in the day, on the eighteenth, if everything goes smoothly, or it'll be on the nineteenth. And then the project will be completed at that point. And hopefully get some favorable weather, get some grass growing. It was a good project, you know, a couple little hiccups here and there, but pretty smooth for the most part. A little update on the oil, oil tank. The project will hopefully start Monday or Tuesday this coming week. The SIN environmental was out today to do the preliminary layout of where the pad in the oil tank is going to, is going to sit behind the high school. The lead time should have the tank arriving around the first week of October. Everything should be in place to have the tank dropped on the pad and then the connections and the wiring and for the pipe that will be made after that. There is a contingency plan in place for a temporary tank in the event that, you know, something gets delayed. So that way we'll have smaller temporary tanks in place to have oil in there so we can get the, the heating season underway if, you know, we get into that time barrier. Hopefully it goes as smooth as the, you know, the leach field and everything goes, goes right along. Touch base on the safety upgrades over the summer, like Superintendent Clutchy said, the remaining servers and switches that hadn't been upgraded were installed. Everything is in operation and it's for preparation for multi-year security camera upgrade. Then we'll go forward to the towns for the capital projects. We did do some camera upgrades that we felt were necessary in the district, which are online now. Quality of cameras that they have now is amazing compared to what we have. I was talking to Chief Nelson yesterday, because we had a meeting with him and, you know, we're looking at a couple of the cameras and just how clear and everything. And we were picking stuff up in the grass, basically, where the other cameras are very, you know, they're not foggy, but just, they're pixelated. So it would be good to start making those upgrades. We have made security enhancements to some of the doors and windows in all the buildings across the district. Like Superintendent Clutchy said, we've added a window film with a structural caulking that holds that film in place. So if somebody was to try to penetrate the window or door, it holds the glass in place and it allows for first responders more time to get here, so that way the intruder can't access the building. Working with Omni Protection Group, we strategically laid out those windows and doors, also taking into account the ALIS program in the evacuation, one of the aspects of that is evacuation. So taking all, you know, all of that into play and laying out, you know, the plan for all the windows and doors. To kind of recap on Lisa's and Superintendent Clutchy's remarks on the repeater system, we're working with Peter, go, go be at Belltronics. We're going to have a repeater and an antenna on every single building in the district, so we'll have intercommunication, radio communication from one end to the district to the other, so all administration can talk to each other via radio with direct link to police and fire. So if there's ever a mutually responsive, there'll be a direct communication for a central command unit, whoever's, you know, whoever's taking control of that, so there'll be a seamless communication across the district. There won't be laps of communication for a better response time. That, hopefully, it's a very, it's, it's a robust system. Like I said, the repeaters and antennas are going in right now, there's a fair amount of programming that has to go along with that. So as things come on, you know, come online, it's, hopefully, from what Peter says, we're anticipated, late fall, we should be up and running with that. That's it for security updates. PFAS, obviously, is, you know, a hot topic right now that we have going on. We don't do too much back into detail from what Superintendent Clutchy said, but I did have a conversation with Northeast Geoscience who we're working with, that's the engineering firm we're working with. As of today, he is about ninety-nine percent done, wrapped up with the engineering and he hopes to get that over to DEP by the end of the week for their approval. Part of the filtration system we're going to be doing is, it's a granulated activated, granulated charcoal, activated charcoal in a vessel that's similar size to a hot water heater. It's about two feet around, you know, sixty, eighty inches in, um, high. And we're going to size the vessels based off the flow of water that we use in the school each day. The first vessel will do the bulk of the work, it'll take the majority of the chemical out. The second one will finish it off to make sure, and we're, we're trying to get down to that no detect. There's no guarantee that we're going to get there, but that's what we're striving for. If, once we start testing after this has been installed, if we're at no detect rates, if we're not at no detect, we're going to, it's going to be designed to add additional vessels so that we can get down to that no detect. Not knowing what DEP is going to come down with for a threshold, we don't even want to, you know, fool around with trying to get to a certain number, we just want to go right to no detect, so that way it's, it's easy for everybody.
Over and above, I'm sorry, over and above, Madam Chair.
Steve, do you have a question?
Yes. Over and above the initial expense for the system, will the charcoal have to be periodically replaced and that will be an ongoing?
It will, and I had a conversation with Joel over at Northeast Geoscience today and that was one of the questions that I asked him. You know, what's the, you know, replant of Shetterville's? And he said on similar systems that he's done, it's in the SI system that we're putting in, you're looking at two years, around two years. It's pretty dirty to go out and change all that, so we'll be contracting that out. They have the right tools to get the job done, they'll come in three, four hours. You know, if we tried to do that in-house, we'd have to buy equipment, you know, and it'd be a day's project, so. But I was happy here that, you know, it's, it should be around two years before we have to change that charcoal, which would be nice. Up at the Hail School, we're going to have to do some retrofitting.
Sure, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, do we have, have we historically tested for this compound?
No, this is really brand new and, you know, and Mass DEP would tell you, it's really, it wasn't even on our radar till after 2016. So this is like brand new, this is like, and that's why I was saying earlier about the real time, the whole notion that we're just going through this and because there's just, I think we are the first school district, which is why I think the Boston Globe picked it up to do what we're doing. So I think that that's one of the reasons why, we didn't realize that at the time. You know, we just thought we were doing what was right for kids.
So, does this represent kind of a higher resolution of suite of analytes that we'll be testing for from this point forward? Or was this a one-off and we just happened to catch it? Does that mean that from this point forward, we're going to be testing on an annual basis, just to make sure it doesn't kind of come back?
Well, you're going to want to make sure that, I'm, I'm sure that we'll be testing regularly because we're going to make sure that.
Yeah, DEP's got mandated, DEP's going to come out with mandates. I'm guessing it's going to be quarterly at first. And then, you know, as we get those test results back, if, you know, we continue on with the no detect, then we, I'm pretty sure we'll be able to back off on that to, you know, biannually or annually, so.
We test out the water regularly, Mike, like regularly, across the district. I think Hail, isn't it like right, almost, is it daily?
We, well, they, they monitor it daily, but with the new chemical injection system and the alarm system, they don't have to come every day with that.
Yeah. So it's really regularly monitored.
Allie, do you have a question?
I wonder if we or the DEP are searching for the cause?
The cost?
No.
Oh, cause.
Oh, no, that's pretty, that's, I think that's pretty well-known out there. Yeah, I think if you, if you go and look, in, in fact, again, if you go to the Mass DEP website, there's, there's a nice section right in there that explains it. So, and PFAS, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, or you or Lisa, I mean, there were things like, for example, fire suppression, Teflon, and, and different companies, different, you know, whatever manufacturing, different manufacturing companies and stuff. That's where this really comes from and it seeps into the soil and, you know, and it depends on like how close or how far you are away from one of those. So I mean, there's a whole series of things, a series of ways it sourced this PFAS to begin with.
But with the Hudson example, they have found culprits.
That's right.
So are we looking for specific situations or?
Well, I think that that's one of the reasons why we were even on Mass DEP's radar, that Stowe was on Mass DEP's radar, is because of Hudson and because some of the activity and the old, some of the activity that's happened in the past, like not present activity, but old historical activity and that's where they think it may have started. So, yes, I, I think that they have an, a, a good idea. Would they say right now, for sure that was it? No, again, because it's all in real time, so they had an inkling towards it, but I don't think anyone's prepared to say, it's because X happened, that's why.
But we're, we're convinced that it's not an ongoing problem, that it's, or not convinced, but what I'm wondering, I guess, is, is something happening currently that's making it continue to be bad or even worse? Is the cause over and done with?
They're, they're calling it a forever chemical, so because it's, I guess hydrophobic, call it hydrophobic and that might be the wrong word to use, once it gets in the aquifer, nothing's going to break that down microbally or anything like that, nothing, it's, it's there. So when it gets in the aquifer, it just moves freely through the aquifers, so it's, you know, it's just traveling as it goes. You know, you did mention that, you know, they found, you know, the pollutant source over in Hudson. I think they are looking into that. Where that is, we don't know, but they don't know right now.
They're not prepared, like, we've asked that very question and they're not prepared to give us an answer, other than exactly what I'm giving, saying it could be a series of things.
And would it be the town, the board of selectmen who pursue this? This isn't something that the schools need to be managing, is it?
No, it's, no, no, I mean, we have to take care of our, our own situation, whatever that looks like. But I mean, the, the larger issue is not, is not the school district's issue.
Okay. Other questions?
Rob?
Up at Hail, we're going to have to make some modifications to the building with the well. The storage tank and the chemical feed is housed. There's a garage on back and the garage is split down the middle. The water supply system is on one side and then it's just a normal garage on the other side that they use for storage. Because of the size of the vessels, we're going to have to kind of take over that other side to retrofit that, to accept the vessels. Down at Center School, it's going to be a little bit more engineering involved with that. We have a water softening system down there and also the chemical feed system. And for the activated charcoal to work properly, all those systems have to be in the right order so that way it doesn't eat up that activated charcoal. So we're basically going to have to retrofit the entire water system down at Center School before it goes into the storage tank. So there's going to be a lot of piping, you know, redoing the piping down in the boiler room there to make this work properly. I don't have numbers yet. Northeast Geoscience is, has reached out to three different vendors to work on pricing. So hopefully, you know, within the next week or week and a half, we should have pricing, you know, for the installation of the vessels and the replumbing and everything.
And the timeframe, I know that that's going to come up as well and you alluded to that a little bit earlier.
Well, because we're going to have to take the systems off. It's going to have to be done, I'd like to say, over a long weekend. We're targeting right now probably Thanksgiving break, because there's so many variables there, I don't think we could, even if, I think we were in the right place, I don't think Columbus Day weekend would be enough time to get all this work done. It's going to take some time with all that plumbing. You know, and I think that's where a large part of the cost will probably come from with overtime, you know, working on holiday weekends and stuff like that. That's kind of what the mindset is right now, Thanksgiving, maybe they'll have to wait, you know, to the, to the Christmas break just to try to, for the time, like I said, we're going to take the water completely offline in the buildings so we won't have, you know, water to the toilets and things like that. So hopefully the next week and a half, we'll have a lot more answers. I think we're in a pretty good place right now from where we were three weeks ago.
Definitely.
So things moving, moving along pretty good.
I think we want to give a shout out to Mass DEP too, who's, who's simply been amazing to work with. They really have been so informative, so helpful, so supportive, so responsive. So I, I think that they have been outstanding to work with.
Anytime that I've reached out to them, you know, Brooke and, well, all of us, we've reached out to them and, you know, if they haven't answered the phone, we've gotten a phone call back almost immediately.
Almost immediately.
So they've been great with working with us. Touch base on mosquitoes real quick. Obviously, you know, we're going to be doing some aerial spraying, we're taking some preventative measures on our end. Just before school started, two days before school started, we had a contractor grow, grow up to spray all the tree lines. We're using a natural-based product, it's cedar oil and peppermint oil. We're also, we're going to be doing a second application on Saturday morning, if it's not raining. Going to try to do it sooner, but just with the logistics of parent drop-off and students being out there, it's about, it takes about six hours to spray the whole district. So logistically, it would have been a nightmare to try to do that. So Saturday morning, if the weather is cooperative, if not, they've agreed to come in on Sunday and treat it on Sunday, which is great. Gatsby Grounds, who we contract for our IPM program, they've been very great to work with. with. Um, touch base on the summer cleaning. Custodial staff has worked tremendously hard over the summer for the detail cleaning of buildings across the district. Uh, if anybody was to walk into any of these buildings, you know, shortly after school ends, leading up to Fourth of July, you'd walk through and be like, how are they gonna get this done? I mean, it's, it's the level anxiety I have walking through the building, and I know what's going on, it's, it's, it's amazing what happens, you know, in a short period of time. Guys work very, very hard. Um, you know, this, this summer was much better than last summer weather-wise, you know, we didn't have the heat and humidity that we had last summer. Um, so for curing waxes and stuff like that, it definitely helped out. And just overall morale with the team, you know, and not being hot and just, last summer was, was challenging last summer. So the summer was almost a breath of fresh air. Um, as the heavy lifting starts to diminish, the custodial teams start to shift their gears and do a little project work, repairing walls, painting. Um, the principals have, you know, task lists that they'd like to see get done over the summertime, so they work on projects, um, for the principals and any of the staff in the building. Um, and my, again, my hat goes off to the whole facilities team. Uh, their hard work over the summer during the school year, it's, it's, it's amazing what these individuals get done, you know, to give the kids a clean and healthy learning environment. So again, my hats go off, go off to those guys and girls.
I think, I, I know I said the first day back too, that I think you could have gone, if, if there was such a magazine as School Digest, I mean, I know there isn't, but if there was, like Architectural Digest, and you see these beautiful, like Brad Pitt-oriented homes that he loves to build or whatever, if there was such a thing as School Digest, you could have taken a picture of any one of our schools that first day back, like there wasn't a weed to be found. The schools looked amazing, just amazing. Um, and I, I always think that, that first day back, and I know Kathy, you were there this, when we acknowledge the, the custodians in the morning, that's like the biggest cheer in the house.
Why, the applause is unbelievable.
The applause is unbelievable, because everybody knows it hard, everybody works to get those buildings ready. So, um, hats off to, Rob, to you, because it's been quite a summer, you know? I mean, you are the pivotal point to all of this, you know, whether it's mosquitoes and, and it's been a lot, and I know it's been a lot of long days, it's been a lot of long weekends, that you've been working here on Saturday and Sunday, you've been coming in to stay on top of everything, just so appreciative, so thank you for all you do.
Any other question?
Any questions, comments?
Yes, Leah. One pesky question. Um, the leaching field is to come online on the eighteenth?
Eighteenth through nineteenth, different.
Is that a problem with the DEP? Didn't they want it on September?
They wanted it on September first, but they, you know, we've been contacted with them right along, so they know what we were up against and some of the issues they had. So we're in good standing with them, they're fine with what's going on.
The first phone call we made as soon as we dug up the little dumpster area was the DEP saying-
They went there pretty quick.
You wouldn't believe it, we just came across. Honestly, that was a sight to see, to, to, to stand there and see all of that. And I said, I said to Rob at first, and I was naive, and I didn't know what I was saying at that point in time, I admit that, I said, "Well, this will give us an opportunity to just kind of clean it up." And he said, "No, Brooke, you need to come and see it. This is not something we can clean up." And you were right, we had to just push the dirt right back over and keep it covered up, so. Yeah, it was quite a mess, quite a mess, so. So DEP is, again, been fabulous to work, because we're doing a lot of work with DEP right now, we've got excellent relationships with them, so.
Okay. Rob, thank you so much. Thanks for all you do, keep things running, appreciate it. And now, Ann Marie Stoika.
There's so much to catch you all up on over the summer, after the summer.
I know.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you, it's good to see all of you too. Um, the summer hiring season presents the Human Resources Office with its greatest opportunity to contribute to student achievement. To do that by supporting the principals and the other administrators in their quest to hire well, which is, in the opinion of many, one of the most important things that an administrator does. The actual hiring decisions, of course, are made by the principals, because they're the experts in recognizing what good teaching looks like. We back them up, go and play a supporting role by seeing that they have a strong pool of candidates from which to select. We verify the credentials of the applicants, check their transcripts, check their licensure, uh, check their work history, uh, for safety reasons. We check their queries and their fingerprints to make sure that all that's in good order. And once a hiring decision is made, we contact the applicant, now the selected candidate, and they make a fair and appropriate offer in a timely manner before someone else snatches them up. And we onboard them and we welcome them. So thank you for this opportunity to let you know how this year's hiring season went. We think it went very well. We're very pleased with our newly hired colleagues. Part of the reason we have such a strong incoming group is the reputation of Neshobur as a high-performing district and as a desirable employer. People want to work here, and we get a large number of applications from a great qualified pool of applicants from which we can select the best of the best. As an example, one of our positions drew 223 applications, which means that the, our new colleague, um, beat out 222 other people to get their job. Most, many of our openings had more than a hundred applications, and, and most had more than fifty people applying for the job. So applying for a job at Neshobur is a, um, is a competitive, it's a competitive venture. We started the school year with nineteen new permanent teachers and two long-term subs who'll be with us for the full year because they're placing full-year absences. Our twenty new, twenty-one new teachers are a good mix of experienced teachers and those who are entering, entering the profession. We've got nine who are relatively new to the teaching field, five who are in their first five years of teaching, and seven who have six or more years of teaching experience. That's a good mix of new and seasoned educators, and really, that's, that's what you want. Four of our new teachers were promoted to their teaching positions after having already distinguished themselves as instructional assistants, so their, their proven ability and the principals have an opportunity to, uh, to see their work. Twelve of our new teachers have got master's degree and one has a doctorate. Uh, most of the eight who hold bachelor's degrees are well on their way to earning their master's degrees. We also welcomed nine new instructional assistants, who are all highly qualified. Several have master's degrees themselves, and many of them have teaching licenses or both. We have four additions to our extended learning staff and one new custodian. We have two new administrators. We have our welcoming Mark Levine, who's our new assistant principal at Florence Sorier, and our new part-time principal at the Hale Middle School, Patrick Perkins.
Who's really not new to us at all.
No, it's all, you know, he's the oldest, the bad guy.
What would we do without Patrick Perkins? I mean, really, he's just amazing.
He should have a thing. At the end of August, our mentor coordinators, Karen Mayotte and Kim Rocha, in conjunction with the Departments of Teaching and Learning and, uh, and Technology, organized and led our new teacher orientation program. All of our new teachers participated, we have a hundred, we had a hundred percent attendance. They met their mentors, they met the district leaders, they had the orientation to the district. The NREA, Kevin came and spoke to them, they got an overview of professional development of teaching and learning, um, and the Student Information Systems, Power School and Power Teacher. The reviews for our new teacher orientation are always positive, and I'd like to recognize our, our mentor co-coordinators, Karen Mayotte and Kim Rocha, and also the Department of Teaching and Learning for making that such a successful day. With the start of the new school year, twenty-two of our teachers, uh, reached the career, career milestone of professional teacher status. It's a significant accomplishment. It's similar to the former, or maybe a little bit more familiar concept of tenure. It's awarded to those who have successfully completed three full licensed years of teaching. During those three years, they were observed and they're evaluated very closely. Each of the twenty-two has met and showed his high standards, they've received the recommendation of his or her principal, and they've been approved by the superintendent. Professional status is a really big deal in a teacher's career. I mean, we congratulated those twenty-two teachers at the high school on opening day and recognized them. Last, we, we arranged again this year for, through MYA, our insurer, for several wellness programs for our employees at no cost. The first is a five-week Fitbit challenge that's gonna start on September twenty-third. MYA will supply the participants with free Fitbits, where they, people can use their own. We have ninety-seven of our employees signed up to participate in the challenge, which is gonna be a fun and friendly, at least it's sex-friendly, competition among the communities. There'll be this Stowe, Lancaster, Bolton, and High School will be the four, uh, the four groups competing against one another. So if you happen to be one of our, in one of our buildings or one of our, if you're up here in the offices and you see someone's standing there and they're marching in place, you'll know that that's, that that's what they're doing. Then later in the month, we're starting, it's an eight or ten-week after-school program called Namaste Nutrition, which as you might guess, is a combination of a yoga and a nutrition, um, awareness type thing. It's always, it's always well-subscribed. MYA also offers some online wellness programs. We recently had one on brain health, um, sugar awareness, we had one on hydration and water. They always have something about nutrition, and I think we're in the middle of one now on cholesterol. The end, the employees can choose, you know, if they, the employees who participate can choose a little gift, you know, a, a water bottle or a yoga mat, or, you know, that sort of thing. Um, those are very well-seen, we're pleased to be able to continue those this year. I'd like to close by thanking my colleagues, Vicky Chardier and Darcy Wardwell. Uh, they always work hard keeping our office humming, but never so much than in the summertime. As an example, our teachers got their first paychecks, mine just started on August twenty-seventh, and they got their first paychecks on August thirty-first. So there was, there were a lot of new people to, to onboard, to, to do their health insurance forms and their banking information and all their licensure and all their everything, and it was all entered, it was, everybody was in the system and everyone got their paycheck on August thirty-first. So I really feel very lucky, you know, to be working with people like Vicky and Darcy, you know, because they really do, the old man's duty, especially in the summertime all the year round, really. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to update you on the exciting world of HR. Wonder if you have any questions for me?
Questions for, for Ann Marie?
One of the things that they do in the summer too is, there, these offices work very closely, HR and the business office, they sit around this table, because it's a lot, you can imagine, for the budget purposes and for making sure that everything is still exactly where it needs to be. Um, they spend like literally days around this table, making sure and cross-referencing everything. It's a huge undertaking, so, um, yeah, Darcy and Vicky do a great job, as do you, Ann Marie. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Okay, so now we have, um, on the agenda, school committee goals. I passed out the proposed goals, the draft of the goals to folks, and, um, we had done an evaluation of, um, where we think we are in terms of our operational protocols of governance, operations, member relations, uh, financial, strategic planning and fiscal management, community relations and, and conduct of meetings. So these are categories that MAS C lays out and suggests, um, ways to look at how we're doing in these areas. And again, I think this is the first year that we have done a, a formal evaluation and have set, um, goals specific to the school committee. So again, this is a draft, and what I have done is, based on the results of the survey, put together these, um, proposed, um, goals for folks to consider, and in, um, most cases have assigned, um, either a committee, an individual or a group to, um, responsibility for them. So if we could go through them and then we can, I'll entertain comments or questions, and I've allotted twenty minutes to this on the agenda. So if, if we're not finished in twenty minutes, then we are going to, um, stop at that point and, um, pick it up.
It's fifteen, actually.
Oh, fifteen? Oh, no, we better get going, huh?
Does anyone have an extra copy?
Oh, yes, I do, right here. Oops. There you go. Okay. All right, so the first one under governance, and I think when I look at this, this is basically what the policy subcommittee's job is. So Leah and I are on the, are the policy, uh, subcommittee, and, um, we will be completing the policy review with MAS C and bringing, um, the policies, uh, to the committee for review and approval. So that's basically what we do. Um, the, um, new member, um, orientation will include an orientation to the school committee, the school, yeah, school committee policy manual, which is different than the school committee manual, and that will be my responsibility to make sure that there is attention paid to the whole policy aspect and the specifics of policy in addition to the other things that the school committee does. School committee will review the district improvement plan annually for alignment with the district's mission, vision and core values. Uh, that's, uh, the school committee's responsibility, and we, this year did that during a, um, an additional meeting over the summertime, and Brooke and I have actually parsed it out over several meetings, um, after the superintendent's evaluation process. So that is the school committee's responsibility as well. Anything about governance, questions, comments? Yes, Leah?
I think the only thing that we were saying the last time we met was that, uh, the way that the district improvement plan achieves our checkmark should be run in a way that we don't feel like we're, um, kind of knocking you guys over, maybe, right? So like the last meeting that we had, it was, here it is, um, is this okay? Whereas then we stepped back and said, maybe it's a better idea to say, here it is, take some time to think about it, right? Like it might be a two-step process?
Well, actually, what I mentioned is that, you're absolutely right, and to have it, to, to do that work over, um, two or three school committee meetings, instead of just having it on one, you know, a, a, one meeting where we're expected to do everything. So I, I have to go back with Brooke and look at, after the meetings, we go back and look at the planning calendar.
I see.
And so, but we did have discussions over the summer about doing, you know, backing it up, having more time, but doing it, um, during school meetings. Okay? Mike, did you have?
No. That's all, thank you.
Um, operations, um, the superintendent, HR director and chair will develop an evaluation of the new member orientation. So I think that's sort of self-explanatory and who's involved, and, um, we will be, once it's, uh, complete, um, share it with the, the school committee. Personnel subcommittee will conduct an annual evaluation of the school committee manual, which is part of the charge of the PSC. Um, the two, uh, big areas of responsibility for the, for the PSC is the superintendent's evaluation process and also, um, maintenance, if you will, of the, the, the school, uh, committee manual, and that includes, um, surveying the committee about any additions or changes to it over the course of the year. So that's the responsibility of the PSC. Uh, member relations, uh, per school committee policy, VAA, conduct a school committee self-evaluation, the results of which will be reviewed and discussed at the June workshop. Um, we started this, um, this year, we do have a, uh, policy VAA in our policy manual, but, um, to the best of my knowledge, have not done a self-evaluation, so we will continue this process. Uh, and I will, uh, most likely send last year's, um, protocol process, um, to folks for, uh, feedback before I send out the, the, the evaluation for folks to complete. So I'll, I'll get a sense of if we need to tweak it in any way. Financial, strategic planning and fiscal management. Annually and prior to the start of the budget, of budget development, school committee will be in service regarding the district's long-term financial strategic plan, constituencies involved in budget development, and how the school committee presents and advocates for the budget. So, um, you will soon see that, um, budget development starts like tomorrow, and, um, the, um, the Budget and War Committee does a lot of the, um, um, work with Pat and with, um, Brooke, and then brings things to our attention. But overall, I think to have a big-picture understanding about how things are done and how the pieces fit together is important for us, and so I will talk with Brooke about scheduling something in the near future so that we have that big-picture outlook, so that'll be a future agenda item, okay? Um, the community relations, the school committee will review the district comprehensive communication plan and its components. So this is something we had, um, the, not this past year, but the previous year, had a communication committee and a communication plan that was put in place. Uh, this year, we approved a channels of communication, uh, protocol. What I would like us to look at is how everything fits together, and, um, so we have, take a look at it and find a way to evaluate, um, it's the effectiveness- at it and find a way to evaluate the effectiveness of all the different pieces of it. So, that's something that I will be working with Brooke on to bring forward. The other piece of this is that this policy subcommittee will review the policy for citizens' comments and present recommendations to the school committee. So, we do have a policy, let's forget about this, BEDH for citizens' comments, public comments, and I know that among members of the committee, there's an interest in looking some other ways to get citizens' comments. And there's something that I'll speak to you about very shortly, that might give us some additional face time with the public. Any changes or comments about the bullets under community relations? And then the last one, conduct of meetings. The only thing that really came up was this idea of looking at making the school committee meeting room conducive to productive discussion and decision-making, and that would require an ad hoc committee to look into this and make recommendations. So, no one is assigned to that, it would be volunteers. So, if folks want to think about that and come back to it, if there's interest in doing that and having an ad hoc committee, then I would want to know. So, do you want me to check in again? Or is anybody interested in being on an ad hoc committee to look at this topic?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Joseph, end here. Okay. So, we can connect on what the charge of the committee would be and what you need to do it. Thank you for doing that. Okay. So, are there any questions, concerns, comments? It's Kathy. Oh, Kathy, right here.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments about the goals? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the goals for this year, the school committee goals for 2019, 2020?
I'll move it.
Thanks, Joseph. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Leah. Fall in favor? Oppose? Okay, thank you so much. And now, oh, so, we have a motion that is going to be by a member. This is an example of something that a member asked to be placed on the agenda, and it has been placed there. And there is actually a protocol that is part of Robert's Rules of Order, and it's known as the main motion process. So, the member makes the motion, to take, makes the motion, and then the motion is seconded. And then, there is discussion or debate, and the member who introduces the motion starts the discussion, maybe provides information or gives an overview. And then, the chair closes the discussion, states the question, and asks for a vote. So, that's the process we're going to follow. And so, at this point, I'm going to recognize Mary McCarthy to make her motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. I move that we include the pledge of allegiance as a standing agenda item following the call to order at all regular and the showbar regional school district, school committee meetings.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Joseph? Okay, Mary?
All right. It seems especially fitting to be considering this motion on the anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks on the United States of America. As we know, public schools were founded with a civic mission of educating students to be engaged citizens capable of contributing to the common good. Across the United States, there's a renewed emphasis on civic education. The new 2018 Massachusetts history and social science curriculum framework includes an increased emphasis on civics at all grade levels, including a new Grade Eight course on civics. In my experience in education, school committee meetings began with standing and reciting in unison the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Many of our local town board meetings include the pledge of allegiance. According to MASC, many school committee meetings in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts include the pledge of allegiance. Not that the pledge isn't without some controversy. No one, including students in schools, can be required to recite the pledge in keeping with our First Amendment right to freedom of speech. As such, the pledge of allegiance can be considered as a civics lesson in itself. The pledge of allegiance remains as an example of our shared commitment to our democratic republic and our vision of liberty and justice for all. I look forward to our discussion and vote on this motion as they turn the floor back to our chairperson, Kathy.
Thank you, Mary. Any, oh, I thought you raised your hand. All right. Any discussion, comments? Steve?
Yes, I have three points I want, I wish to make. Number one, having stood on the back loading dock of my company in Brooklyn 18 years ago today, and seen the second plane crash into the World Trade Center, where just a few years before I had had an office, was quite an experience and one I will never forget. Number two, being a veteran, and probably the only veteran, maybe, in this room at the present time.
Oh, Steve, can you just speak up, please?
And probably being the only veteran in this room at this time. I would, I would also like, as my third point, to say, unfortunately, the pledge to the flag, as has been said, has become somewhat controversial, and the wrapping of the flag by certain political groups in this country leaves me kind of cold. And while I grew up not only saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag every day, but the Our Father every morning, and I don't think any of us would have a point, or try to make a point, that we should go back to that particular recitation, I am against that, against having the pledge to the flag at the beginning of our meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joseph?
I want to tell my colleague, I respect what my colleague from Stell has to say, but I cannot support Dr. McCarthy's motion more vociferously. To me, this is more of an equity issue. My understanding is that the protocol in this district is that we ask our students to stand, pledge allegiance, excuse me, to the flag each morning. If I recall, at our graduation ceremony, we also stood and recited the pledge. I talked to Mary a little bit about this back before we were on the school committee. To me, the pledge is more iconic than anything else, and I do understand that it becomes a sort of a controversy. But to me, it's always been a part of the American educational system. It's as iconic as the yellow school bus and the red apple. I fully support Dr. McCarthy's motion, mostly because I don't want to be a member who would ask any student in this district to do anything that I myself would not do.
Other comments? I just, I just want to make one comment, and first of all, I want to thank you for your service, and I'm aware of the, sometimes the political winds that blow. And I do want to reiterate that one of the most fundamental rights that we have is freedom of expression and freedom of speech. And I have, in watching sometimes the landscape out there, become distressed when the feeling that everyone needs to conform to a certain point of view is met with derision, and that's not what we're about. And you're right, as Massachusetts state law says, that schools have to offer the pledge of allegiance, and it's expected that people either say it or sit respectfully while it is recited, but no one is required to say it. So, I just don't want this to become a political thing. Everyone has their own view of what is right for them, and if there is any more, any more comments or discussion, I would like to entertain them right now. If not, I would like to move the vote. Any more questions, comments, discussion? Okay. All those in favor of reciting the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of each regular school committee meeting after the call to order, please raise your hand. Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay. The last item under new business is something that I have a citizen comment discussion, and I see it along the lines of improving communication. And this is something that I actually picked up at the MASC conference that folks talked about. There was a lot of discussion about citizens' comments and what folks do, and by and large, most school districts do as we do, and if there are to be citizens' comments, they are said, they are directed toward an agenda item. And we've had discussions about, you know, what we want to allow on this committee, and a couple of school districts actually call something, they call something, school committee office hours, because it's not an hour. But what I, let me read what I wrote. Per our policy BEDH, our school committee meetings have citizens' comments address agenda items at the MASC Summer Institute. Districts with the same policy, some districts with the same policy, said they have office hours held by one or two members where citizens can bring forward other issues. My idea would be to pilot holding school committee quote-unquote "office time" prior to each school committee meeting from 5:30 to 5:45, and apply the same policy that we have for citizens' comments during the school committee meeting. The pilot would run from October to December. Elaine and I, you said you would alternate with me, right? Okay, yeah. Elaine and I will alternate chairing these sessions, and no more than two other school committee meetings can join us. Ideally, like, one other person to join Elaine or myself. Topics will be shared with the school committee. So, we would have something, probably depending, because I think that you have your budget more at committee meetings.
Usually at five, yes.
Usually at five, and we would do it, but we wouldn't, we would find a place to have it either here or in the teaching and learning conference room, which is right below us. And people would be able to bring up other issues that are not on the agenda, but we would apply the same rules, there would be no disparagement of personnel, no sharing of personal information, but it would be a way to allow folks. I mean, people could still email us and that, but there are times, I think, when people want, just want to tell us stuff. So, I would like to see where folks, what folks think about this idea. Yes, Leah?
So, I think that I've had now two opportunities to meet with constituents, and I think it's a great idea. I think that when I did do it, Elaine joined me at one point, people felt heard, they thought it was an opportunity to express things that they would otherwise have, know where to bring it, and oftentimes, it, there was really no need for it to go any further. And so, I think that it's like a sell, almost, for people. So, I totally support it.
Yeah, you know, I'll say this, I will fully support the endeavor, but I will say that it is a bit ponderous to me that this district, unlike many other bodies politic in the Commonwealth, does not have a public participation, public comment portion of its agenda. We do, excuse me, we do, but it's limited to agenda items. In many other jurisdictions of the Commonwealth, it is not, and it is an opportunity for individuals to come not only before their body politic, be it Board Selectmen, School Committee, what have you, but in front of their entire town, because it is generally broadcast via available cable access to, you know, voice their issues, concerns, and what have you. I'll be honest with you, it can sometimes be a very high-adventure type of agenda item. But overall, my experience, it's been generally productive. People are generally contrite and respectful. There are some occasions where things get a little out of control. By example, I think the native school committee recently had an issue in 2018 regarding public participation that actually went to the Superior Court, and the Superior Court actually sided with the participants as opposed to the district committee. But if this is, you know, if this is what's proposed, I would fully support it, but as one member or one seventh or one eighth of this committee, I frankly would welcome full public participation on any issue that any member of the district feels they wish to voice to the district committee.
Well, like I said, when we put to our goals, one of the goals of the policy committee would be to look at the policy. As our policy is written, it addresses items on the agenda. So, it's, it's open, but before we address the policy issue, this would be something that we could pilot.
Right, and it sounds to me that this may be where we end up, or it may be a stepping stone or something else. So, in that regard, I would be fully supportive of it.
Next?
Yeah, that's just sort of exactly what I was going to say. Because we have a goal for the year to think about this, to borrow a term from Brooke, thoughtfully, I think that that's going to take some time, no matter what the end result of it is, and in the meantime, I'm all for trying some things, putting some stuff out there, and, yeah, just trying it, doing some experiments, and seeing what works. It's not going to be anything that works for everyone, either all of us as committee members or the entire community, but if we put some stuff out there, maybe we'll figure out what works while we're doing the official policy process.
Mike?
If this is indeed a pilot for, I think it's been a couple of months?
October, November, December.
Okay, three months. Is this something that could be reported back to the school committee?
Absolutely.
In terms of the feedback that you've gotten, and sort of the impressions, what it's worth, what challenges, or?
Certainly, and just as, my citizens' comments, we're quite aware of the topics that have brought forward, and there, we don't engage in discussion, but something may be referred to Brooke to do some more work on, or for us to get more information on, so it would be the same thing at the, so, if some, I think the first time we would do it would be October 9th, at the end of the meeting, maybe during correspondence or even during citizens' comments, we would just mention the topics that were brought up and what the disposition might be. So, there would be, it would have visibility to the committee. Leah?
I would ask to, just keep in the end in mind, so, what is the objective? I think the objective is to improve transparency with the community, give community members an opportunity to communicate more directly. And so, therefore, in order to measure whether or not it's effective, you need to have, you need to, I think we need to think through, how can we like, survey people on its effectiveness? Because I don't think that we would be able to judge if it was an effective method in isolation, we would need to ask constituents, hey, everybody, we communicated that this was available to you, did you take advantage of it? Why didn't you take advan, do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, and I don't want to, I'd like to, to, to think about that, because when you think about it, our constituents is every single person in all three towns. All right?
And you wouldn't have to collect data from every person, but at least offer the opportunity for them to weigh in on its effectiveness.
Well, I think that there'd have to be a way to do that, and I really haven't thought that through yet, but what the heck. Mary?
So, I do think it's a good idea, I think that it's worth trying, but I also am not used to citizens' comments, where people, I haven't even been on committee for very long, but I was, I did come to meetings even before I was on committee. And time after time, citizens came to meetings to talk about something, and then read the policy that it has to be something that's on the agenda, so they really couldn't talk to it, and that has not been my experience. And I know we've talked about this, and it opens up the whole world in a way.
And I know we've talked about this, and it opens up the whole world in a way. However, I think when people make the effort to come to a meeting and, you know, whatever they've had to do, childcare, timing they get here, then they find out, well, next time you come, look at the agenda ahead of time, because citizens' comments are only for that. So I would like us to look at that again.
Sure.
Because, but I do think that this idea certainly is worthwhile, and I was going to echo what Mike said about some way of whatever is talked about that can be brought to committee, that you would bring it to committee.
Absolutely. We allow 15 minutes for citizens' comments, and I think that if you have, in many districts, they give priority to people who want to address things that are on the agenda. And then if whatever time period, and most districts have 15 minutes that they allow, some 20, then that's it. Because when you look at, we're already 10 minutes behind schedule, but that's okay. But there was one community that lets public comments, citizens' comments, go as long as it needs to go. And the work that we need to do, there's a lot of work, we want to hear from people. I think with the advent of email, there's a lot more opportunity to communicate directly. But I think that all the issues that are being raised are things that we can look at when we look at the policy. And, but this is a good first step, and we'll see how it works. And I think we'll give feedback. I'm not quite sure how it would work, but we'll figure out a way to do it.
I have some ideas.
Then I'd love to hear them, but not now. Okay.
Similarly, or sort of bookend what Leah was talking about, we're going to need a way to communicate that this is available as well.
I know.
We have to put something together.
The members of the press are here, so maybe if the next meeting, we'll have something more concrete to put together. I'll put together a proposal for next time. And we, this is informal, it's a trial, it's not part of our original meeting, so we don't have to vote on it. I just wanted to share that with you, because I am aware of what the concerns were from members of the committee, and so I'll put together a plan, a proposal, and Leah's going to let me know how best to evaluate it. Okay? Super. Thank you so much. Okay. There is no old business, subcommittee reports. Mike, do you have a report for us?
Yeah. The, of course, the subcommittee received a draft of the superintendent's annual plan. We reviewed the draft of four goals, district improvement goal, two professional practice goals, and one student learning goal. You and I, members of the personnel committee, submitted some feedback, and we're going to be probably meeting multiple times prior to, prior to the recommendation of the school committee, but I think we're still on track to do that by the first meeting in October.
You're not going to be here.
Correct.
So I was just, I was going to email you that on the down low, but since you brought, so we'll have to schedule it for the 22nd.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Steve?
You have a, you're not going to be here in the first meeting in October?
Correct.
Neither am I.
Yeah, all right.
It's Jim Kipper, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that means everybody else has to be here.
Does anyone else have a conflict with the ninth? Okay. And if anyone else cannot be here, you need to let me know as soon as possible. All right. Thanks for letting us know. Just add you to my list of absentees for that day. Okay, thanks. Okay. Steve, budget warrant.
Budget warrant. We had kind of an aborted meeting earlier this afternoon. I guess.
No.
People didn't remember.
Not that I any noticed.
That it was set in June, that we would meet at four o'clock today.
Be that as it may.
Be that as it may. So I sat with Brooke and Pat, and we went over, we went over a few things. I had a few questions on the numbers. Basically, we're coming out exactly where we felt we were going to be coming out. We will have $800 and somewhat thousand dollars to put back into E and D, although we also have $750,000 we'll be taking out of E and D for the 2019-2020 budget. Other than that, we'll see a lot of the final numbers, I guess, next, at the next meeting, and we're in good shape as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. So it wasn't an official meeting?
No.
So it was just an update?
There was no official meeting, so there were no minutes taken.
Okay. So Mike and Steve, do you have the dates for your meetings for throughout?
Well, our next, our next meeting will be before the next school committee meeting. I think that's the 23rd.
Okay, but.
At five o'clock.
Okay. So my point is that I had asked at our meeting in June for the chairs to give Alita the meetings for the year, so they're part of our school committee calendar, so everybody's aware.
Well, that's.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm just thinking, it's difficult, because we really don't get into the budget. Once a month, we look at the numbers from the previous month, but we really don't get into the forward-looking numbers until January, after the budget seminar.
So is what you're telling me that at your meetings, you'll set a date for the following year?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have a date for your next meeting?
I just said the 23rd of September.
Thank you. I remember now that you said that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, Mary?
So I took the minutes at the, at the subcommittee meetings.
It's 25th.
Subcommittee meeting minutes. And the meeting was to be at five o'clock before the Shover School Committee meeting. However, because we had, and I never heard anything.
So that's okay. It wasn't.
But I don't want that to happen, because neither, there was no one there. There were three of us.
Right.
And neither one of us knew, and I took the minutes.
Okay. So moving forward, we will make sure things are communicated in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Okay, no, no harm, no foul. Okay. Consent agenda? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the September 11th, 2019 consent agenda, including the meeting minutes of June 5th, 2019, roles and responsibilities workshop minutes of June 19th, 2019, district improvement plan workshop minutes of August 7th, 2019, and the warrants of September 13th, 2019.
So.
Second?
Second.
I'm going to look that to Joe, because you've seconded it all. Okay. All in favor? Okay. So let me see where we're at, responded, items to be considered for next or future agendas. All right. So what do we have? I have to, okay, no, we don't have to do that. Yes, Mike?
I think we said a proposal for the comment, the comment discussion proposal for the next meeting.
Oh, yes, okay.
Sort of a formalized proposal.
Yes, thanks.
And you mean for the pre-meeting?
Yes.
Not the formal policy?
No, not the policy. That's got to start at policy. Okay, proposal, citizens' comments. Yes?
Yes, I have something, and it will take perhaps 30 seconds of the superintendent's time at the next meeting. Now, I'll take 30 seconds of her time in the interim period between now and the next meeting. But it had a constituent request for some information regarding possibility, if one does not exist, of creation of a master calendar for the district. What this constituent advised me was that in trying to organize anything within the district, sometimes they have to go to, you know, the different schools to look at calendars to make sure there's no conflict. And they've asked for this possibility if it not, I don't know if that exists already, but.
Actually, we have looked into this. We've already tried this. I'm not sure where we landed, but it seems to me like we tried to do this even this last time, go around with the, we support the notion, we haven't got the means yet to do it, but we support the notion of doing that.
In that regard, Madam Chairman, I would just withdraw my request, the superintendent's already aware of this, and so.
Okay, but I would want to follow up with, I will follow up with the superintendent.
Right.
Okay. We need to plan an update of the special education.
Just a sped update.
Yeah, the sped update to include a program evaluation. We are going.
I think that's in the October, I think that's scheduled for October.
Okay, we'll just have to look.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else for our future or next?
I guarantee there'll be other items.
I'm sure.
Leah?
A quick question. This might just be me being new. We had a constituent request to consider flipping the start times of high school students and elementary school students and that whole, that whole.
So the topic is school start times?
Yeah.
Okay?
I don't know if it's already been discussed.
No, it hasn't, and it's an enormous undertaking.
Surely. Okay. When we do this, I think it's, we can identify things we want to talk about, but it's not the appropriate time to, and I don't mean this as an admonishment to anybody, just that in the interest of time, we can take down the topic. I will talk with Brooke about it, and then we can come around. Okay?
Great.
There was something else, master calendar, school start times, the sped, special education update. Was there something else? Okay. Oh, I know what we wanted to do. So we're looking at, the planning calendar is in your materials if you want to look. So for next time, we have the guidance update, the district improvement plan.
Yeah.
We approved it, but it hasn't been presented at a school committee meeting. The business manager reports, a treasurer report, middle school athletic revolving funds review, fiscal year end report.
I think we did the middle school tonight, right?
No.
Oh, no, we didn't do that.
No, 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 this is about revolving funds.
That's right.
Fiscal year end report, year end revenue update, dormant revolving funds transfer and student activity, new old updates.
That's going to be a long meeting.
Yes, okay.
Without one, adding one more thing.
Okay. All right.
It's also on there, maybe you have all the copies, that middle school DC trips?
Oh.
Yeah.
Not on this one.
Second one down.
Middle school.
Middle school, oh, no.
Oh, I, no, that's the revolving fund.
Middle school DC trip approvals.
I must have an outdated, yeah, okay, trip approvals.
That's going to be a long, a long meeting.
Not if I can help it.
So, you can?
Yes, not for the next meeting, but someplace on the planning calendar, we'll be looking at representation in terms of.
Yes, that's on there. It's regional agreement, DC membership. That's what that is. Okay. Anything else? Okay. So Elaine is going to make the motion to enter executive session.
Right. I move the school committee enter into executive session at 8:25 PM pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair said declares. George B., George King, the Shover Regional School District, and Patricia Marone, Civil Act Number 18B, B643A, executive session to include Superintendent Clenge, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McQuire, Business Manager Pat Marone, and Legal Counsel Kevin Pretag. Committee will adjourn to executive session.
Second?
Who seconded?
Oh, no.
Who seconded?
Who seconded? That's the motion.
You did. You just seconded it.
I did? Okay, whatever. No, sign me up. Okay, real call. Alita, can you take, oh, Steve, go ahead.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mike Orish?
Here.
Myself, yes. Leah Viverito?
Yes.
Elaine Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Kathy Codien?
Yes.
And Joseph Feliz.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we take a five-minute?